Hi, the veteran, can I hear you?
Okay.
I remember the plaza. So if you don't mind.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Zone for the Police meeting, April 12, 2022. Tonight, we have no tableed matters. We have seven, six scheduled items. We have proof of publication for all these items. Mr. Harrell, now, everyone's entitled to be heard in front of a full board for short one member today. You need three yes votes to be heard. Does anybody wish to table? All right, before we get started, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, and for which it is liable to be responsible, and for which it is just as well.
Mr. Barone?
Here.
Mr. Staffordbeck?
Here.
Mrs. Vola?
Here.
Mr. Howza?
Here.
Mr. DiMarco?
Here.
Mr. Arteso?
Here.
So the first scheduled matter tonight is 975 Ridge Road Jersey Mike's sign. So if you identify yourselves for record when you vote for the motion.
Let me read it first. Let me read it into your first. 975 Ridge Road Jersey Mike's sign located at 975 Ridge Road. Advocate Steve Stanley of Vital Signs is requesting a second building mounted sign on the rear of the building where only one is permitted associated with Jersey Mike's sub shop on a 2.37 acre parcel having SPL number 079.15-1-18.1 located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under section 22, I'm sorry, under section 178-7 of the code of the town of Western.
Welcome.
Hello, Steve Stanley from Vital Signs. So my client, New Jersey Mike's, is looking to have, as I said, a non-lit building mounted sign on the back of the building to identify the door for deliveries that are on the come to his shop. The request is in line with precedent that's been set with the additional signage on the backside of the building for the other tenants of the plaza. Ours will be nonlit and will be much smaller. On top of that sign, the sign will be made out of both PVC and aluminum composite material. The aluminum composite material will be the oval shape. The raised dimensional PVC letters will be used for the copy of Jersey Mike's. The sign will be sheeted with digitally printed vinyl for the red on the outside, the blue on the inside, and then the copy that says "Since 1956 and Subs." It'll be mounted to the building using Masonry Tapcons. On top of that sign, they are also asking to be able to change out the lexan panels that are on the monument that sits on the corner of Shook Craft and Ridge. Those will be solar grade, I'm sorry, solar grade lexan panels with translucent vinyl over the front so that night, the message will shine when the monument is lit.
Now, I think you said the sign you propose is equal in size to the other signs that are on the rear of the building?
I'm sorry, what was it?
The sign you propose is equal in size?
No, much smaller, much, much smaller.
Smaller than the other signs that are presently on the rear of the building?
Correct, yeah, those other signs that are lit for both the mattress store and AT&amp;T are much larger in size than what we are proposing. I believe we're proposing, or I believe we are proposing a 66 inch in width by 48 inches in height where the other signs are much greater in size.
Now, right now, when you get deliveries to the rear door, they don't know which door to go to.
I can't speak to that. I would imagine with it being in your business, I would imagine that having the identifier on the building there would make deliveries much more, much more easy, seeing how it'd be probably new food vendors for that particular franchise going to that area.
What is the square footage of the sign you're proposing?
The square footage of the sign that we are proposing is... Sorry about that. Let's do some quick math. Thank you, Josh, 22 square feet.
When I looked at that, I forgot to give her what the other's variances for the signs on the rear of the building. But it makes perfect sense in that it's visible from Shook Craft, which you proposed from the back. It's a nice identifier and it is kind of unusual because only about two doors that don't have signs over them to identify the business. It seems, it's a smaller sign than we've allowed for the other businesses. It always seems right that there'd be a lot of signs as well. This meeting is open to public. If anyone wants to speak for against the application, you can step up. Seeing there's no one interested, I'll close the public session, turn it back to the board.
Very quick question, a second. You've said about a monument, changing on the monument sign?
No, changing the lexan panels that are on the monument sign. Right now, there's still Little Caesar's and every other.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't just count the cents to these votes, same, but to grant the others.
I agree. Is there a suite number for this, for Jersey Mike's within the name of the building? I just want to be specific to that suite number.
I'm very sure that there is. I do not have that suite number. But the door that is on the rendering that you have in front of you, I believe, that is for sure Jersey Mike's door.
Not just for our records, where we know who she's bearing this for the next week.
Pursuant to NYCR, section 617, the environmental code, make a motion for type 2 secret.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to go through the schedules? All votes were done. The request is not out of character. Obviously, the other businesses have the same type of signs on the rear of the building. There is no detriment created to nearby properties. As a matter of fact, I see advantages in that sign, both for advertising and for delivery purposes and identifying their door on the deck of the building. The benefit is not achievable by any other method. Signage is the only way I can find that door. Request is not substantial, as the applicant said, his sign is actually going to be smaller than the other signs that are already on the building. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. Difficulty is not self-created, it's just the way the building is situated.
Right.
No undesirable changes. And again, the request is not significant because it's in keeping with what's already there.
Thank you.
Anybody want to add anything? So that'll make the motion to grant an area variance to Steve Stanley of Vital Signs for New Jersey Mike's to allow a second building mounted sign on the rear of the building where only one is permitted associated with Jersey Mike's sub shop on a 2.37 acre parcel having SPL number 079.15-1-18.1 located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under section 178-7 of the code of town Western.
The only thing I would like to add is, I believe applicant educated besides the signs, so I consider it in the fine suite number, Josh, could you add it?
Sure.
As part of the draft that the minister could adopt that.
So we'll add that to the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
Mr. Staffordbeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Okay, you had your variance. Have to get building permit variance put to one year and should get them in the last one.
Correct, and then the planning board meeting is the 3rd of May, correct?
Correct.
All right, fantastic. And after that, we can get to the amendment. And then also, while I was here, I'd like to speak on the matter of the extra signage at Bunsey's on Empire Boulevard. Both the landlord and the tenant, or actually the tenant, has decided not to move forward with the signage at this time. And so we are withdrawing our application.
That was original.
Send it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
And the second application is 978 Pear Tree Range Shed.
978 Pear Tree Lane Shed located at 978 Pear Tree Lane. Advocate Fortunato Pirado is requesting a nine-foot side setback for 15 feet is required associated with the installation of a new 10-foot by 16-foot utility shed on a .43 acre parcel having SPL number 064.11-2-64 located in an R2 single-family residential district under section 225-48 of the code of the town of Western.
Good evening.
How you doing?
So you didn't identify?
So I'm asking for a variance for nine feet in the property. I know it's 15 feet required to put a 10 by 16 newly built shed. I do have a letter from my neighbor that I share the property with and they're okay with it, with their signatures. Yeah, that's it.
There's nowhere else on the property that we can really put the shed just because we have a very pill-y property, so this is our only flat land.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed it does drop off quite a bit.
Yes, yep.
Also noticed there's a shed next door that's pretty close to that property line, to the east. Probably, I don't think I've various for that.
Oh, and yes, that's correct. You have nine and 10, something like that, yep.
I went in the backyard and your dog kind of stared me down, so I didn't stick around too long.
She's a sweetheart, I promise.
Yeah, but and looking there, that looked like the normal, natural place for that shed. The dog convinced me.
She tried to go with me.
That's a good girl.
I agree with Barry. When I visited the property from the road, I did not realize how far that backyard drops off. It's a great sledding hill. But between the location of the house and the location of the pool, that really is the only logical flat spot for the shed to go. It is still 25 feet from the back lot line and the neighbor to the east is not close to a main at 19.
We have the letter from the neighbor if we want those.
Do you have a letter from the neighbor?
Yeah.
Make that part of the record, please. This meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for against this application, step up. Seeing we have no one, we'll close the public portion of discussion. Okay, members of the board, you reside at 974 Pear Tree Lane and were informed by our neighbors, Fortunato and Nicole Pirado, who reside at 978 Pear Tree Lane, that they intend to build a shed on the side of their property where it meets ours. They informed us that they would be requesting a variance to build a shed 19 from our property line instead of the 14. I would inform you that we would not be opposed to granting their request for this variance and then have their signatures on this. So the neighbor that affects the most has no problem with this variance. Pursuant to 617, an environmental code and make a motion for a type 2 secret.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Seems like a pretty straightforward request. We have no opposition from the neighbor. It appears that that's the best place in the area for that shed. Somebody else want to run through the standards?
Their request is not out of character with the neighborhood. As was noted, there is another shed to the east that's, looks like it's within a similar side setback from the side lot line. There's no detriment created to nearby properties. There's a bit of a hedgerow that shields it from the nearest neighbor, 974. And we also have a letter from the neighbor at 974 that is in favor of the shed. Not achievable by any other method, I would say in this instance, it is true in that the topography of the backyard leaves a limited flat area for the location of the shed and any other use of the backyard. No adverse environmental or physical impacts to the site or to the neighborhood. It's a shed, it's not going to be electrified, it'll be fine. Difficulty is not self-created based on the topography and the layout of that lot. Anything else? All right, with that, I would make a motion to grant an area variance to allow a shed with a nine-foot east side setback for 15 feet is required at 978 Pear Tree Lane for Advocate Fortunato Pirado and for a shed that is a 10 by 16-foot utility shed and a parcel having SPL number 064.11-2-64 in an R2 single-family residential district.
Second.
Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Mr. Staffordbeck?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
You have your variance? It's put one year, you need to build the permit, of course. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
1606 Ridge Road Garage Edition.
1606 Ridge Road Garage Edition located at 1606 Ridge Road. Advocate Matthew Turnbull is requesting a 52-foot front setback for 75 feet is required associated with the construction of a 1,280 square foot attached garage addition to an existing single-family residence on a 1.9 acre parcel having SPL number 080.02-1-70.11 located in an LC2 low-intensity commercial district under section 225-15 of the code of the town of Western.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Garage? Just give us your name for the record.
Matthew Turnbull. Just trying to build a three-car garage. We added a few cars to our personal fleet and ran out of room. And then we're trying to add a kitchen to the existing house on the same floor and a bedroom and living room all on the same floor. Have to walk down the stairs. That's what we're reasoning for.
When I visited the suburb, it's a huge lot. Huge lot. And something else that's significant, I thought, is the house directly to the west is substantially closer to the road than this house. So what he's asking for is not really out of character. Should I also look on before the code is approved, I was just saying.
Actually, I would consider this the extension of the pre-existing that apartment. It's negative. There's other portions of the house that are closer to the road than what is being proposed. So I would, during the, I would consider that the extension of the pre-existing that apartment.
Actually, he backed through the front porch by quarter. So he's not actually lined up in front of us, he backed over to the front. This meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for against this application? If they've seen that there is no one that wants to speak, we'll turn it back to the board. Pursuant to NYCR, section 617, that's where NCY, our environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type 2 secret.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
It's, Mr. Howza pretty much summed it up. The house is pre-existing non-conforming. House is where it is, it's weird, so. And it sounds to me like there's no impact. They actually decided, how should we build in the addition, the neighbors, there's no neighbor for over 100 feet. So really, there's no negative impact to anybody. Sounds like you want to convert your, to the garage and the living space. Aging in place, are you?
I'm sorry.
Aging in place seems to be the trend today. People want to stay, love their house, they want to stay in their house, they're modifying their house, they can stay there. I'd mind for that, that's all. Anybody else have any? No, there's no environmental impacts, no negative environmental impacts, no adverse physical environmental impacts. Difficulty is not self-created, the house is where it is, they have to add to it. Garage has to go on that end of the house. And as Mr. Howza said, it's pre-existing non-conforming. Someone wanted to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant a variance for 1606 Ridge Road Garage Edition located at 1606 Ridge Road. Advocate Matthew Turnbull is requesting a 52-foot front setback for 75 feet is required associated with the construction of a 1,280 square foot attached garage addition to an existing single-family residence on a 1.90 acre parcel having SPL number 080.02-1-70.11 located in an LC2 low-intensity commercial district under section 225-15 of the code of town of Western.
Second.
Mr. Staffordbeck?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
All right, you have your variance?
Okay.
You got yours, got to get a building permit?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Quite long. It's got to get tougher. 1572 Barrow Hill Inground Pool.
All right, 1572 Barrow Hill Inground Pool located at 1572 Barrow Hill. Advocates Amanda Anishis Ferma requesting an area variance to allow the installation of a 15-foot to a 34-foot in-ground swimming pool and associated fence partially in the front yard of a corner lot which is not permitted on a .62 acre parcel having SPL number 080.04-6-14 located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 225-47 of the code of the town of Western.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Amanda Ferma. I'm the owner and one of the applicants for the variance. We're here requesting an area variance due to our corner lot. So we were told that we have two front yards, which was new to us when we were going to get the permit for the in-ground pool. So I know you have the survey in front of you, hopefully. If looking at the survey, you can see that there, when we purchased the property in 2020, there was several pre-existing structures in place. There's a shed, there's a large deck, and there was a stamped concrete custom fire pit that was there. And then on the back line of the property, there's a pretty large swale, drainage swale. So when we were looking at where we could place the pool, there really wasn't a location other than along, we have a set of pine trees on the one side of the yard where we could put an in-ground pool.
Now, this says it's partially in the front yard. Is it going to be forward of the line of the house? In other words, is the fence or the pool going to be forward of the line of your, of your garages? Or is it going to be behind that?
For the actual front of the house is on the other side.
Well, I'm saying, we have two front setbacks.
Correct.
Me and a corner lot. Is that going to extend further, closer to the road than the house?
No, it'll go closer to the house. The length of it will be, I guess, I take that back. The length of it will go along parallel with the roadway.
Right, and what Mr. Barone is asking is the, I don't even know how to ask for that. That there's, if you draw, look at it from a top view where the line is of the front of the garage and the side of your house, it's considered the front of Barrow Hill. Will it extend closer to Barrow Hill than the side of your garage, the entrance side?
Yes.
Okay.
How much closer to the, from the map I have, I can't really tell.
It will be all setback, but it's well over 40 feet from the road itself.
Okay.
Okay, so the house is only 42.7 from Barrow Hill. So if you're at 42.7, you're not moving.
Right at the edge of where the garage is?
Yep.
There's like a little divot where the, if you were to walk, I don't know if you guys have drove by the lot there. It's right along the pine trees. So it'll be roughly, I should have mentioned the pine trees. The builder had informed me that it was well beyond the required setback where the pool would be.
Okay, so it will be in excess of 40 feet off of the west side of your house. Or the west side of, the west side setback, which is the front. west side of, the west side setback, which is the front setback. I hate the front of that.
Way strong with the little x's for the fence. I can't tell that goes over that 40. I mean, we might be splitting hairs, but we're going to have to come up with a dimension.
Well, there's probably a walk, kind of a walk around the pool.
There'll be a three-foot concrete walk around the pool.
I would just say 40 foot front setback.
Maintain 40 foot setback, minimum setback.
To the walkway.
Because then...
Yeah, because the pool's irregular shape, the way it's shown on the survey.
So they're at it from somewhere.
It would give them some playroom, because we have to consider the walk, the fact that walk around the pool.
Well, if you avoid strong stuff too.
I think as long as we specify that it's at least 40 feet.
Yeah, it's not their waters. I'm talking to...
Right, to the 30.
Because the fence is usually outside the concrete.
Right.
So...
But the fence would be permitted, anyway.
Yeah.
And then they, yeah, as long as we keep it within 40 feet and specified, that gives them...
The playroom. Little bit of flexibility.
Yeah, they could move it within that, within those parameters.
I do also have a letter from four of our neighbors.
Who's neighbors?
That I can...
I know this neighbor across the street's built a garage, and their corner lot.
Yeah, he said he didn't have to the variance.
Okay, I have a letter here I'd like to add to the record. It says, "We are writing in support of our neighbors, the Scurmont family, at 1572 Barrow Hill, in the construction of their pool. We believe that the location of the pool is appropriate in regards to their lot and home. We feel that it will have no effect on the aesthetics of neighborhood." And that's from Mark and Jessica Husk, 1574 Barrow Hill. Actually, they have several signatures. Mark and Sandra Turner, 1567 Barrow Hill. Matt, it looks like, maybe Laura Hanley, 1577 Barrow Hill. And David Browser, and Stephanie Browser, at 1563 Barrow Hill. So they have the support of all the neighbors around them, so that would be added to the request. Now, this meeting is open to public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Seeing no, we'll turn it back to the board. Somebody like to go through the standards?
We do see very good.
Pursuant to 617, in the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type 2 secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I'll run mine on through. So we have support, probably five or six neighbors in that letter. It's not out of character to the neighborhood because it's a corner lot. Interesting thing about corner lots, they have two front yards. Very small, very small backyard. So we see a lot, we see more variances for corner lots than we do for interior lots. Neighbors had no problem with it. The applicant stated that the entire structure will be at least 40 feet from Barrow Hill, which is the front setback on a corner lot anyways. So I guess, was there an area variance actually within the code?
Well, the notice has written that the front yard, the front yard is a portion in front of the house. So we know that I mentioned...
If he was 40 then, because actually the house is 40.
That's why I recommended the 40.
42.7, so she go up to 40, we're going to allow up to 40.
That's correct.
Okay. There's no detriment, no detriment to neighborhood. Obviously, the neighbors are in favor of it. Difficulty is not self-created. As the applicant stated, a lot of the structures on the lot were there when they bought the house, so they've left them one place left to put this pool. So I think the board agrees that as long as she's a minimum of 40 feet back from Barrow Hill, with pool structure sidewalk and everything.
She has a substantial stormy smit in her apartment.
Yeah, yeah, the stormy, it's a huge drainage well and stormy smit that has to be avoided so that further impacts her ability to move the pool and has to be in this location. With that, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to property 1572 Barrow Hill. Applicant Amanda and Ashley Scurmont are requesting area variance. So what we're going to do is allow the installation of 15 by 34 in-ground swimming pool and associated fence, sidewalk and everything. The whole structure will be a minimum of 40 feet up Barrow Hill. And in the front yard of the corner lot, which is not permitted, a .62 acre parcel have an SPL number 080.04-6-14, located in an R3 single-family residential district, under section 225-47 of the Code of Towne Wester.
Second. Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Bollum?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, have a variance?
Thank you very much.
Yep, building permit? We're looking for the project. Okay, 1027 Lake Road Garage Edition and accessory building.
All right, 1027 Lake Road Garage Edition and accessory building. Located at 1027 Lake Road, applicant Nicholas Pax is requesting area variances to allow a 45 foot front setback for 85 feet is required, associated with the construction of a 20 by 23 foot attached garage addition to a single-family residence, and a 40 foot rear setback for 60 feet is required, associated with the construction of a freestanding 20 by 24 foot accessory building, on a 1.1 acre parcel having SPL number 049.02-1-1, located in an R1 single-family residential district, under sections 225-9 and 225-36 of the Code of Towne Wester.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Nick Cox. So I'm the homeowner at 1027. Like you said, I'm here for two items. I guess we'll start with the first, which is I'd like to build a garage addition attached to my home, in front of the home, in the direction of the main road, which is Lake Road. The required setback is 85 feet. My current home is pre-existing non-conforming at 67 feet to the road. The topography of my lot doesn't really allow placement of the garage anywhere else. And where the existing driveway is, it's the most natural placement to put the garage right in front of the house. The house does have a single-car garage underneath the kitchen right now. It's just a rectangular house, 48 by 25, but that single-car garage is too small for any vehicle to fit in. And so we're trying to build a two-car garage, and then on top of it have living space that our existing kitchen can extend into. So that about sums up that item. I can talk to the second item, or we can discuss them individually. I don't know how you prefer.
No, bring up, bring up the second item.
Okay, sure. So the second item, I'd like to build an accessory building in the rear of the yard. As you can see on the survey, there is a natural hill where I'm trying to tuck the accessory building as far back as I can, and then that'll bring it to about 40 feet from the rear property line.
Okay, I'm visiting the site. It's an unusual lot. It's a large lot, but there's a ravine that dips down on the west side and goes up east to the west, the west-east side.
Right, it takes away a lot of usable space on the lot. You know, probably 30 or 40% is inside of that ravine, which is not really, you know, I can't touch it. If you even walk down there, it's kind of a swamp.
My first thought was, why doesn't he put the garage on the west side of the house? But that's right where your front door is. The house almost faces west instead of facing the road. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's like it's built from the back, it's on the side.
Well, and I think based on, of course I've not built it, but based on the topography of that lot, when it was built, that was probably the only, the only location and orientation that made sense.
Yeah, that steering wheel, having a board steering wheel over your driveway to face the ravine for measure.
Why can't your accessory building push closer towards Lake Road, farther away from your property line?
I'm trying to maximize the yard space that I have in the front there. And because of that ravine and the hill, there's only so much area there for my kids to run around, kick off the balls and ride their bikes. So I'm trying to push the accessory structure as far as I can, back to that where there's kind of a drop-off, where I wouldn't be able to, to build it. To the south there, there's, there's no houses directly south. It's all open yards, so I'm not encroaching near any other structures to my neighbors.
This meeting is open to public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Seeing we don't have anybody wishing to speak. Do you have any letters from the neighbors?
I don't.
We'll turn this back to the board. Pursuant to section 617 of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type 2 secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't really see any place else for that garage. The garage is not, what he's proposing is 23 feet deep, which is not accessible, 20 feet away. It's pretty much a minimal to a current garage.
You're speaking the, the test garage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, now, Don, you made the point, why not move that accessory structure a little bit closer to the lake road? Give it a little bit more setback on the roof?
That's right.
I didn't, I didn't really pay attention to what's right behind it. Anybody else?
Well, there's a subdivision behind it.
But the location of it, the house behind it is 401 Bittersweet, and the way it's proposed to be located between the Bittersweet property rising up and the ravine and the Woody, what am I going to call it, Pedro, it's not, it shouldn't be in sight of the house at 401. It shouldn't also be visible by the house next door, which is actually 1035 Lake, just based on where the lot raises and, that, no, that's what my hands go.
Well, the reason is there, you know, so, is somebody had to ask it.
I, well, I...
I, for the record, I want to make sure that we...
Yes, well, the first question, first question is, why can't you comply? Why can't you comply?
Well, when I visited the parcel, that was, my initial question is, it's a large lot. It's over an acre. There should be no reason, except when I viewed the lot, pulling it further from the rear property line will make it more visible, in addition to using up what little usable yard space there is. It's, it's a big lot with not a lot of real estate that you can actually do anything with. The ravine is significant.
No, I would, I would agree with that. I, again, it's an unusual lot, the unusual lots are the ones that we see from the rest of the world, and it's just, and as Corinne said, I don't believe there'll be any detriment to the neighborhood to the south.
Right. Well, and the lot, the lot is actually also wider than it is deep, which is unusual. Most lots in Wester are nearer, nearer than they are depth, which gives you the more depth for location of buildings, whereas this one is, it's almost square, but it's really a little bit wider than it is in depth.
Anything else, Bill?
No. And as far as the garage, that's the only logical location.
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes absolute sense to put the garage there. And there again, there's no detriment to the neighbors with that either. Somebody, somebody like to go through the standards? Should we handle these individually? Your garage and the accessory building? I, I think it could be done together.
Anything on the standards?
Well, I mentioned, I'll finish my statement. It's a little bit of an unusual lot in that the land drops off on the west side, rises up on the east side. The house orientation, the house was built oriented to, kind of, there was topographical features of the lot, because, like, I don't know how to say that. So therefore, the garage has to be closer to Lake Road, you know? That's really the only logical place to put that. There is no detriment. We haven't heard anything negative from any of the neighbors when we spoke against the project. Again, with the topography is, the house is kind of standalone, unique, so it's not right up against another project or another house for any set back differences. The benefit for the garage is really not too many of the benefits. For the accessory building, we asked why it couldn't be further from the rear line, and frankly, he has very little flat backyard for his family's use, so it makes sense to push that shed back, that 40 foot rear setback. The request is somewhat substantial, but again, the uniqueness of this lot is what's forcing the various decisions to be what we necessarily, difficulty is not self-created in these grounds. Our client in need of garage, as others do. That numbers are a change, and it's significant, but not to the point where it's a detriment to anybody, many neighboring properties. So, anybody?
Yeah, the existing house, which the garage is being attached to, looks like that's pre-existing non-conforming, having a setback of 67 feet, which obviously compensates the requires that attached garage.
So, so Mr. Howza's saying we should add this to the record, is that the house is pre-existing non-conforming, and the garage has to be attached where it is, so kind of stuck with the location of the house as it is. So, over that, I'll make the motion to grant an area variance to a house located at 1027 Lake Road, applicant Nicholas Pax, to allow a 45 foot front setback for the garage addition where 85 feet is required, associated with construction of 23, 20 by 23 foot attached garage to a single-family residence, and a 40 foot rear setback where 60 feet is required, associated with construction of a freestanding 20 foot by 24 foot accessory building, on a 1.1 acre parcel, having SPL number 049.02-1-1, located in R1 single-family residential district, under sections 225-9 and 225-36 of the Code of Towne Wester.
Second. Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Bollum?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Have a variance? We're looking for the project. Need a building permit?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and head number six on the agenda, the line light.
Line light automotive pedo location, located at 1173 to 1175 Ridge Road. Applicant line light automotive parapet of Woods O'Viet Hillen L.L.P. is requesting a, an area variance to allow, I'm sorry, a use variance to an automotive accessory installation business, a use not permitted in the district. a use not permitted in the district. B, an area variance to allow a forty-one foot district buffer to the rear, where one hundred feet is required. C, an area variance to legalize an existing fourteen-foot east side setback, where twenty feet is required. D, an area variance to allow a fifteen thousand nine hundred sixteen square foot lot size for lot R one D two, where forty-five thousand minimum is required, associated with the construction of a twenty-three hundred square foot building in addition to an existing banking commercial building, a one-point-two acre parcel, having SBL number zero eight zero point thirteen dash two dash three point one, located in an M.C. medium intensity commercial district, under section two two five dash seventeen of the code of town of Wester.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm just on the board, it's nice to meet you tonight. My name is Betsy Brug, I'm attorney with Woods Ovea Hillman. Steve Smith from Limelight Automotive, the business owner is here. And Pete Gorman from Marathon Engineering as well. So I think the application was read with enough detail that you know what we're here for. So Steve operates Limelight Automotive, which is an aftermarket auto accessory service provider. It does not follow within the definition of motor vehicle service station as defined in the code. They don't sell gas, they don't sell oil, they don't do fluids, they don't do tires, they don't do any kind of mechanical bodywork, painting, nothing like that. They essentially do window tinting, they install automatic starters and some vinyl work primarily. So kind of very clean work, nothing that's particularly noisy, smelly, doesn't produce a lot of kind of those types of impacts typically associated with motor vehicle service types of use, type of uses. So it's a relatively clean operation. He's been in business on Ridge Road, just across the street, a little bit to the east, for about four years. He rents his current space, he'd like to own this property, configure it and really create the space in a way that allows him to operate and, you know, operate efficiently and invest in his business. So the property's been available, it does require a use variance. The board might remember, we were here not all that long ago in connection with a use variance application for the corner of the property. All of the property had been owned by Row Photo, the owner of Row Photo, who operated their business there for a number of years. I think he opened, he operated, I think, from two thousand four to two thousand sixteen in the particular building that we're talking about, the commercial building on Ridge Road. He closed, there's some market issues, things with Xerox, just, you know, various market factors resulted in him closing. He's actually had the property marketed since two thousand and nine. And I went through sort of the history of the marketing, I did this a little bit on a previous application, and I've done it again in this current application. So you have kind of some details as to all the various kind of history, the uses that have been interested and pursued the site. They include, at one point, fast track, for some reason, gas stations really wanted to be on this property. They wanted to kind of the whole corner. Jiffy Louvre was a really good fit, the neighborhood was comfortable with that use. Limelight is really a similar complementary type of a use. It's a good fit in terms of the other uses along Ridge Road. And while this is in the M.C. zoning district, it is adjacent to residential zoning and we're very sensitive to the neighborhood to the south. That neighborhood has been involved in the past and been very interested in what happened on this property. So the Limelight Auto use is a daytime use, very similar to like an office type hours. I gave you the, your current hours, I think they're Monday through Saturday, they're not open on Sundays. You know, daytime hours of operation, Monday through Friday, nine to six, Saturday, time to five. They typically serve between ten and twenty-five customers per day. They don't typically store cars. Usually these are cars that come in and get service and leave on the same day. And I'll walk over to the site plan here. So, okay, so here is the Jiffy Louvre site. The property that remained is, this is where Row Photo used to be located. There's a barn here that's in really bad shape and will be torn down. There is a two-family that's been occupied, illegally pre-existing, non-conforming use, that's going to remain. There is a house here on Jackson Road that's also occupied and that will remain. And as the board may recall, it helps to provide a buffer to the residential neighbors. The proposal here is to use the existing building to build a twenty-three hundred square foot addition on the building. There is, there's some new bays shown on here. So essentially, this will be kind of like a waiting area, a check-in area, kind of some showroom space. There are existing bays in the back. This is not a high-traffic bay area. Rather, these bays provide convenience and allow for some efficiency with cars going through the building. And it really prevents having to pull cars in and out through the back. So it's really just for efficiency and it kind of keeps the back, you know, well-maintained in terms of the amount of activity back there, minimizes the amount of activity. There is parking provided, they don't really expect to have a whole lot of cars back here. Really, the idea is that customers will come, they can check in and then pull through. Typically, vehicles are in and out on the same day. When work is being done, the doors will be kept closed. We're very sensitive to that, that there are neighbors here. The, one of the variances is for the rear buffer, the buffer between zoning districts to a residential neighborhood. We don't have the existing conditions on here, but essentially, the pavement is being cleaned up and squared off here. So the buffer is actually improving a few feet, but it's essentially staying in the same location. And the quality of the buffer is improving. Some landscaping is proposed here. I think we had originally proposed from Arboretum, but I believe there were comments from, I said the town's arborist? The conservation board, they wanted, they wanted specific native trees. And that is fine, we are happy to, he was happy to put in any type of landscaping that the town would like to see. We did present the concept plan to the planning board not long ago. You should have received a letter in support of the variances in your materials. So the planning board was positive and supportive of the variances. They also noted that this is a nice low-traffic volume type of a use that, you know, it's a good fit for the location adjacent to the residential neighbors. We have variances associated with subdividing the lot. The proposal to subdivide the lot was made at the request of, I understand, the town assessor would like to see the property subdivided so that the single-family lot can be assessed separately from the commercial. So it's just an arbitrary line, but it does create a non-conforming lot size. I believe this is a stormwater for the entire corner here, so that's shown on the plan. We provide parking, we're going to basically clean up the site, make it look nice. There's one bay shown on the front, it really just allows cars to pass through. But I think the planning board also was concerned with having, you know, kind of the appearance of the front of the site. Fortunately, this is back from the road and I think this is really the only way that the site lays out properly. So as far as what we're here for, we've given you a fair amount of proof on the use variance. We need to show that the property cannot generate a reasonable return on the uses permitted by the code. So we've given you some financials, we've given you a letter of opinion, speaking to the challenges of the location from Caliber Brokerage, which is the most recent broker that had the listing of the property. So he speaks to, he's documented here all of the marketing efforts. The property, I think you can see, has been extensively marketed, professionally marketed, not just by Caliber, but by brokers before Caliber. The location, just, it's off the center of the commercial corridor, so it's just not as desirable for many of the permitted uses that are out there. And again, there's some challenges with any user who looks at this site in terms of the impact and proximity to the residential neighbors and the residential zoning adjacent to the south. Let's see, we've given you income and expense information, just documenting again that the current property owner isn't generating a reasonable return, any return to the property. I think we've documented all the various inquiries, various uses. I think they've worked hard trying to get a permitted retailer, somebody who's building a drive-through type of a use that you might find elsewhere on Ridge Road, there just hasn't been the interest in this location. A medical use was proposed at one time and that developer went to a different location. So in addition, the other factors are addressed also, I've addressed all the criteria in writing and I'd be happy to go through them all. Not sure how much detail you want me to get into, but I think that, you know, in some, looking both at the area variances and the use variances, the use itself is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, it's protective of the residential neighbors, it's a complementary use to Jiffy Louvre, it's a low-traffic use, it's a low-intensity use, and makes use of the existing building with essentially a modest addition. The area variances for the buffer, we have it advertised to allow forty, forty-one foot district buffer in the rear, where a hundred feet is required. Again, this is an existing condition, if anything, it's being improved with the proposed site plan. It's being improved a few feet, plus the quality of the buffer is being improved, the pavement's being improved, the site's being occupied, it's being repurposed. It's going to be a much more attractive neighbor to what's there currently and it's not going any closer to the adjacent neighbor to the south. We want to legalize the existing four-foot east side setback, where twenty is required. Again, I think that is an existing condition. Let's see, I think it's back, I think it's back here. It's the setback right here, and that is an existing condition. There are no changes that are going to impact or increase that, that deviation. And the final area variance is for the lot size of the residential lot. Forty-five thousand square feet is the minimum required in the M.C. district. The proposed lot size is fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixteen square feet. Obviously, it's a single-family residential, so the lot size is actually more consistent and closer to what would be found on a residential, non-conforming lot that you might find around town or around on Ridge Road. It does fit the, fit the house. We don't have any additional land, we really can't move the lot by much. We've got a stormwater facility there that needs to serve the properties and I don't think we want to put that on the residential property. So it makes sense that the lot should be the size proposed. As for the area variance standards, I should step back. I think the hardship is, I think we've demonstrated it's not self-created. The current owner has worked very hard to market and find users for this property without success over a number of years. The area variances are also not the result of any self-imposed or self-created hardship. They are the result of existing conditions and, and I guess the desire of the town to subdivide the parcel and create a separate residential lot. So with that, I would think our team is here, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think what we need to do is tackle the use variance first.
Okay.
Because without the use variance, there is no point in tackling the area variances. So I see the income loss, income loss in the data that we got here. I understand, that property's been for sale a long time. I understand the, you know, the need for the use variance, but the financial data is what really we have to hang our hat on. And we're looking at losses every year for the past five years and maybe even further back than that. I know it's been aggressively marketed because I drive by there several times a day and I see different brokers trying to market, I mean, pressure brokers, not numbers for sales on there. I guess everybody has the financial data. I guess we've, we've already given a few use variances in that area, one to the Royal Car Wash, one for the Jiffy Louvre. Apparently, we need more automotive shops than we need retail shops in town because shopping online, you can't fix your car online, you gotta bring it to a shop. Anyways.
I think I, I think I noted in the comments, I think from the PRC, that there is not any property zone, CEO, property in that area.
Actually, there's nothing left in Webster.
And he's already an established business in the neighborhood, he's really just moving across the street.
Yeah, I, I do recall a few years ago that there was an auto body shop that we, we experienced too. It was down at Empire Boulevard. And they said, we've been looking for years, there's just no property, there's no automotive, other storage, etc. So I can see the need for it. This meeting is open with anyone wishing to speak for or against the project, step up.
I have one question.
Yep.
The rear, is there a fence still there with the landscaping? Shouldn't mention a fence.
Could you, could you step, could I step up to the mic?
Sure.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Before you respond, can you pose, can you see or can you impose that as a question?
Yes. Margaret, we're dealing with seventy-eight Jackson Heights, I, it's the rear of the property. And before, I talked about a six-foot vinyl fence with the landscaping, I'm just making sure. I kind of like the idea of a fence.
Yeah.
Okay, it's all that he's to.
Yeah, solid fence and landscaping.
Yes, and leaving the existing landscape.
If, if these folks get the use variance and area variances, that's the way to put this, that I'll go back to the planning board. So you'll have an opportunity to voice your opinion there.
That's fine.
Planning board's really big about buffers between commercial and residential spaces.
We are on the planning board, major.
And the fence and the landscaping has been added to that plan, it's been submitted to the planning board.
How many cars a day do you think you put through there? I mean, the other variances we've seen at present have been concerned about traffic.
Yeah, I understand. Roughly ten to twenty-five, we're seasonal, more seasonal shops, so we get a little slower in the winter than we are in the summer, so a little bit more traffic in the summertime, but, but yeah, about ten to twenty-five, almost everything is done same day. Occasionally, we'll have a car for a couple of days doing a project, a small project or something, but yeah, it's pretty, pretty low, you know, traffic.
One of, one of the points that we made when we approved the Jiffy Louvre use variance is it's owned for fast food. You'd have hundreds of cars a day, Jiffy Louvre's gonna have thirty or forty.
Cars that are running, so that's.
Cars that are running, yeah, so even though it's automotive, it scares people, the traffic generated is really much lower than many other uses.
I think that directly speaks to the uniqueness of the property and the uniqueness of the hardship, that this is not the kind of location that is suitable for a high-volume traffic type of use.
Now, will you have vehicles stored overnight outdoors or will everything that you're working on be?
Very occasionally, a car or two, if a customer can't pick it up that day. You know, sometimes we have people drop their vehicles off for a day before they go on vacation or something. Someone sits it up every few days before they get back. I personally like to lock a room inside, so if we have the room inside, that's what we like to do. I'd like to have an empty parking lot with nothing that can be, you know, vandalized or anything like that, not that we have any left too much anyway, but, but you know, that's kind of the idea for customers, you know, safety on their vehicles and stuff, keeping their stuff safe.
The location that you're at right now, there is quite, there's quite a few cars parked behind it?
There were quite a few cars. It was a deal that I had, when I had first moved in that building, we didn't have any need at all for that space back there. So I had worked with that used car, I couldn't even tell you exactly what he does because it seemed like the car stayed there for quite a while and didn't really move too much. Long story short, we just kind of used that, rented the space, if you will. We came on issue with the, with one of the.
Yeah, they were not his vehicles. He allowed somebody else to park cars there.
Okay, all right, so I guess the question I'm trying to ask, and not very well, is that that won't be.
Absolutely not, it was never part of my business, I had no reason to store cars like that. It was simply a way of utilizing that area that we were renting at the time to just kind of make a couple of extra bucks on it. It wasn't anything even very lucrative at the end of the day. It was just a space that I didn't need to use. And had I known it was against rules or anything, probably would have not even accepted that. So, no, never do we intend on selling or storing cars like that in any way, so.
So you're not going to sell any vehicles out of it? Because it's a much more intensive use to have outdoor storage automotive than it is for automotive accessory installation. Much more intensive, so that's what we want to avoid.
Yeah, I understand that. I had actually asked about sales at one point in the very beginning of my questioning, only because we like to work with dealers to, you know, to get our work on cars that you may have purchased brand-new. And that requires, sometimes to help that process, you can get what's called a transporter plate essentially, which means that one of my guys can then go pick up a car down the street at Marina or, you know, one of the Henderson or whatever, bring it back to us, we can do the work, bring it back to them. That require, in order for D M V ruling and stuff, you kind of have to, you're applying essentially for a very mild sales situation. I've completely avoided the idea of this at this point. If we need to work with the dealership, so we can work around it without any of that. But again, the intention even from that, and the only reason why I had brought up questioning whatsoever, was because the D M V had required something along those lines on the most minimal scale of it just for us to get a transporter plate to do that, so. Which would be considered a dealer plate, if you will, but I'm a very, I'm the lowest, you know, end of that, so.
Again, the use variance is a little bit more difficult than area variances in that. They have to prove that they've been denied, you know, reasonable use of that property. And as I said, I'm sure everybody else has seen this, the building's been empty for years. And they've been adding to the market. And we do have the financials, financials in front of us showing losses year after year after year, which will become carbon footprint, of course. Do you have any lives for the years like that?
We have not two of them here. And Gary, the builder of the building, actually.
Good evening. Gary Lozaro. I actually built the building in nineteen eighty-seven. We live right next door. We're the neighbors to the east. And we recently moved because I sold that building to Roel Photo over eighteen years ago when we decided we were going to downsize our operation. And so we moved down four doors to the east, right across the street from Limelight. So I've watched their operation and what you hear is what it is. U P S and FedEx trucks are basically the delivery people. And it really, I don't feel, you know, when Roel was, really, the business was going strong right next door to us, we didn't really feel any major impact to that. And I don't expect there's going to be an impact from what's going on here too.
I see on the map that you own property next door to the.
Next.
Right next door to this property?
Yes, that's where we live.
At eleven seventy-seven.
Eleven seventy-seven.
So you're the immediate neighbor to the east.
Okay.
You own the property immediately to the east.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. You're from the immediate neighbor to the property. I guess, I don't know if I need to make a motion to this, but I'd like to make a motion to call this an unlisted action, meaning that it's a use variance. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a couple of questions. Is the, my understanding is you're purchasing this property?
Correct.
Are you going to occupy the entire building?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you're not going to rent any portion of the building?
I do not intend on it. There are offices in the back that are separated in, within the building. I intend on kind of knocking that wall out and utilizing it. There's no, I don't think it would even work to have a secondary business around back at that point. So although it might be some unused space for me for a year or two, there's no reason to use that in any way. The duplex and the home are already rented out. And we don't intend on, you know, picking anybody out or really getting much into that at all. And it's going to help with, you know, just kind of paying the bills and stuff, but, you know, we want to be a good landlord, basically, so.
To where the engineer, he had to know what the original lot size was of the house on Jackson Road that's presently standing there. Can you say that, imagine it like you got. The original lot here of that house.
Quality of Jiffy Loop?
It's on lot R one B dash two. Well, this whole property is one big property, so I didn't.
I understand.
My question was, do you recall what the original lot size of that was?
Before Jiffy Loop was?
Yes, correct. I do not, I don't have that subdivision.
Point three eight acres.
Thank you.
It's point three six five. Okay, so it's fairly similar to.
Yeah.
Correct. Don't we pick that specifically so the stormwater management facility would be on the Limelight property? It's a better pairing than having that on the residential lot.
Well, the reason I ask is they probably have some concern. This commercial use spanning on that portion of that is not being occupied by anything with this application.
That's all I'm saying. Definitely want to at least have that meet somewhat the same size as the original house was, as far as the lot here. Was that shed ever removed? I know that was a condition of, or a removal of the variance.
The shed behind the residential on Jackson?
Yes.
There's no intent of removing that this time?
Looks like it's on adhesion, standard adhesion.
Correct.
It's pre-existing, so there's nothing pre-existing. Nobody would grant permit over adhesion. It's relatively small and easy to move if needed, so.
Same property owned by the same people? I mean, you're.
Yes, correct.
Owned by the same.
Probably one parcel.
Yeah, yeah, owned by the same. I think that's where the application is going, is you're a small, you want to relocate that.
I thought we, yeah, I thought it was a condition with Jiffy Loop.
Yeah, that's what I'm recalling. That's okay. I'm just.
Well, Jiffy Loop right now is a work in progress. Maybe it's still going to be done. It shouldn't be done. It's a condition. Jackson will be ahead of it.
It certainly has been more than one year, so that's gone. We have a copy, so we're clearing it up now, so that's. Yeah, Steve says he's okay with knocking that down tomorrow, so. I'll put that, I'll put that on the demolition plan right away.
There's nothing in it now. We, when we did your phrase, we opened it up to, and it's completely empty. It's actually pretty well-built. It's not like falling down or anything, but.
No, I mean, we located, just located outside.
Sure, yeah, you're right.
We have no problems with that.
Okay, so we have the financial data in front of us that supports the use variance. Oh, we've heard from the immediate neighbor, no objection. I think we were pretty satisfied with the use of the property not being too intensive for that location. Don posed the question, will the sublet or will other businesses be there? And we have to think the case that that's not the case. They will not sell cars off of their property just to do automotive accessory installations. Is there anything that isn't? It's not out of character with what we've approved in that area as far as the use variance as well. It's not out of character.
I'll just, you know, I would like to establish a limit of cars that can be stored outside.
A limit to not the cars that you store outside?
Yeah, I would say nowhere too overnight.
Is that, is that reasonable? Too?
How many residents are living in it?
Okay, so you're right. The parking, there's partial, there's a part of the parking lot that's close to this duplex here. So, I mean, you're going to have probably two or three cars just for the tenant.
I'm just, I'm talking commercial.
Realistically, if I could, if I could ask for maybe five.
I'll tell you what, I see residences much to four or five cars.
No, right.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think two.
I'm just thinking, look, we used to have a lot of this little residence, so we're trying to avoid that.
Yep.
But I would think five or six. There's twenty-six parking spaces.
Yeah, we got, we got a whole road back here with the six-foot trucks. It won't be visible probably, or over the neighbors. So I mean, all the storage cars in there will be well-screwed.
What would you, what would you guess with six cars overnight? I'm going to talk about.
So I personally own four or five myself, so, five cars to myself. So projects, you know, things that we use as showpieces for our, for the business and stuff. I have no problem buying a piece of property and storing some of that thing down there. On a boat that's behind the building currently right now. That I intend it on, storing my house from now on and things like that. But occasionally, you know, more to my cars will be at that shed shop. One of them stays there pretty specifically to show, to kind of showcase. You don't need to do that, but, you know, there's an occasional, like you said, overnights that customers have dropped off. I can't say I have appointments in the morning. You know, we have drop box where we're currently at. I can't necessarily stop if I have five appointments and I drop off at seven o'clock at night for just to necessarily stop that from happening. I just, I'm just thinking realistically how many cars I can limit that to. And again, most of the time, I don't think there will be many at all. One or two will be perfectly fine, but on the off chance that there's a few more, you know, dropped overnight or something.
All I'm doing is trying to establish, you know.
Yep.
Trying to put some guilty.
No, and I'm just trying to be realistic with it, but I don't have a lot of options. So are we.
I appreciate your honesty.
Yes.
Is it fair to say nothing then at the north?
You're correct, that would have no reason.
Overnight customers can park or you can't store vehicles at the north of the property. Is that fair enough? Because everything's protected from the buildings and the fence and the back door.
I'm counting twenty-three parking spaces excluding the four spaces for the tenants. So, I mean, I guess, actually, I'm not, I'm not that concerned about the parking in the back if they're in fact going to have a fence and landscaping and a berm because they're, they'd be hidden between the building and all that so that the resident, nobody could see it. The residents can't see it.
Right.
And people from Ridge Road will be able to see it because it's behind the building. So that's not, I mean, personally, I wouldn't see this. I understand what you're saying. You got to set some parameters.
That's right.
But it's almost going to be a hidden parking, parking area. So I'm wondering how, I mean, we could set over, like ten or twelve, you'd be able to.
I would give our car though if we did the same.
Well, there's eleven spaces behind the building. We might want to limit it to those eleven spaces, but that.
Sure. Sounds like me.
Because I know what you're saying.
Did you say some?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's eleven plus whatever the four resident spots.
Oh, right, right, yeah. I'm not, I'm not counting the tenant parking. They, they get to park there.
That's right.
But just vehicles associated with the business so that it doesn't become.
Yes, I would like to allow spaces in the back to eliminate anything from being visible from the front. Again, even at that point, I doubt we'll be utilizing much of that.
Great. Okay, sorry.
Eleven cars, I mean, one person's working on, eleven cars overnight, like your sack vehicles.
Overnight storage.
Vehicles associated with commercial applications.
Okay, Cameron, ready to make a motion?
No, right now, we're just doing the use variance.
Double, double check with the area variances. Anybody want to add anything before? Okay, I'll make a motion to grant the use variance to a property located at seven, eleven seventy-three and eleven seventy-five Ridge Road, Limelight Automotive, to allow the use as an automotive accessory installation business. They use that, not permitted in that district. Now, one of the restrictions that we need to add that was eleven vehicles excluding the parking spaces for the tenants for overnight parking, eleven vehicles.
No car sales.
No cars, and no car, no car sales, correct. Let's see here. Okay, all the rest of this is related to the area variances that I see. Okay, so the use variance is one point two eight acre parcel and an S B L number zero eight zero point one three dash two dash three point one located in an M C medium-intensity commercial district. Now, the section that's cited here is probably for the construction of that building, I believe. John, am I forgetting anything?
A few things. First of all, obviously, you need to verify that you're satisfied with the foundational proof that the land in question cannot yield a useful return. But used for the purposes allowed and so on. Now, I don't doubt the record is complete with respect due to that I find that it is correlative if all of these citizens in the area, in that building, that's allowed. And secondly, the plate of the current owner. If the project is due to the unique circumstances and that potential condition is in that area, so there may be light retail spots that suffer from difficulty in that area. But the board should really make a finding if a certain nature of that is harmful that is tied into the hardship.
So make that part of the motion is that they have actively marketed to businesses that are allowed in that zone without any success.
You're adapting the materials that was provided and shows the financial hardship in terms of the property that you're considering.
I can speak to this.
That financial information is tied into the uses that are currently allowable there.
You can adapt also the information provided by Caliber, the commercial broker, who outlined the various businesses that it was marketed to and the various interests, the other interested parcel parties that were businesses that were not permitted and that the, they have not been able to find a tenant that is suited to the permitted uses. You can adopt that information as well and put it in the minutes of findings.
Yeah, I think we should conclude this.
Yeah, that would.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I would refer with that.
Okay, so we, as Corinna had stated, we do have a pretty detailed history of the property from Caliber, the commercial broker. And it lists all the, all the allowed uses in the site that have been. And it lists all, all the allowed uses in the site that have been pursued and rejected. And we'll make this part of the, leading to the financial hardships that they're suffering right now. So, we'll make this report part of the, part of the motion. Say that, John?
Yes, I said it was, and that would respect to the requirement of needness. That who said the property had some type of singular disadvantage through the operation of the zoning regulation is currently subject, otherwise, that the, the uniqueness is a pervasion throughout the entire area, which would require more prevention of the change. Right, I would just try to find the, this, this singular disadvantage or hardship to this property, and that's your thing, that the advocate of the board who discussed everything in the record relative to that singular disadvantage, that uniqueness, such as causing.
So, the hardship it suffered is not a blanket hardship to that area, it's simply unique to, unique to this property.
Right.
Based, based on the financial data that's been provided.
Well, we make it out in the letter. I was gonna say, so what we've discussed in the letter as far as the uniqueness is that the broker has identified that the location of the property is farther away from the commercial core, the redevelopment costs are high because existing buildings and structures and the existing conditions. We have a limited size of the property, it only meets the needs of certain users, and we are adjacent to residential zoning, which creates some challenges with the type of uses that you could actually have here, that would not be objectionable to neighbors.
Got all that? All right. So, that's all been included in the motion, the motion date.
Well, they, that would be the findings.
In order that information that is necessary to the board that's creating use of the uniqueness, if you, I think that the, the help would be said.
What do you say?
That those would be the findings to support the motion, but those would be included within value of the motion.
Yeah, all, all findings that we just discussed should be a part of the motion, right, so it's more, more.
And I think we can also note that there's no available other real estate to make it a lot larger, which would make it more attractive to another possible use. It's, yeah. There have been, I think, before this board, at least once, maybe twice, a use variance granted for this parcel, and then it just was financially, I believe, too expensive because there was a doctor's office building at one point in time, I think.
There was a medical office, they rejected the site and went to a different property.
Okay.
After their due diligence, they walked away. There was fast track, and that was met with a significant amount of competition from both the town and the public.
We, we've seen other applicants coming through.
We have, we actually approved the strip mall. But there were no, I'll say tenants for the mall to make it attractive to build because there's enough empty.
Yeah, the broker's already documented that there aren't the right green uses to attract.
It doesn't, doesn't draw.
Right.
This is more of a destination, this isn't just a driving by and I'll stop at my line, so.
Okay, I'm in motion, we elaborated on the motion, added a lot, a lot of details back to that, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Corinna?
Hi.
Mr. Hauser?
Hi.
Mr. Staffenday?
Hi.
Mrs. Bola?
Hi.
Yeah, that's for the experience, okay. Now, let's stop off the area, I know you already went through it, but just give us the higher level.
Sure, okay, so, again, the area variances are for the one here, we have three of them. One is for the existing building setback, we required twenty feet, and I believe we have fourteen and a change, fourteen seven. Here it advertised at fourteen, the existing fourteen foot side setback where twenty is required. We need an area variance for the lot size in order to drop this lot line here. Again, this was, this subdivision was proposed purely at the request of the assessor. And the third area variance is for the buffer, this pavement is already in the buffer, the buffer is currently thirty-seven feet. It's improving, it's going, I think, to forty-one, forty point six feet is, I think, what we put in our submission. The quality of the buffer is gonna improve, we're gonna have a fence, landscaping, clean up the scrap area, and essentially improve the buffer, so those are the three area variances. I think the benefit to the health, safety, welfare of the community is significant in addition to the benefit to the applicant. I don't think there's any detriment from the granting of any of these variances. Essentially, this line is really invisible, we're maintaining the residential use. This is an existing condition, this is an existing condition, the site's being improved. It's consistent with the character of the neighborhood, if anything, it's been improvement. There's no alternative to the granting of these variances, they will accomplish the goals of subdividing the slot, maintaining and using this existing building and the existing parking. Variances are not substantial, again, we're dealing with existing conditions. As far as the physical and environmental conditions of the property, this is an overall improvement. We're gonna have stormwater management, so there's a lot of improvements that come with this, we're using an otherwise vacant property that's been sitting here a long time. And the hardship is not self-created, it's the result of the existing conditions of the property currently. So, we're not really making the buffer any worse. The property is essentially staying the same, it's an invisible lot line, and it's an existing setback. So, I think we meet all the requirements for the area variances.
Now, the one setback is existing.
The fourteen foot.
So, it's kind of a, we're kind of making that legal. Right, the building's not gonna move, that's, it is where it is. Matter of fact, the addition doesn't impact at all, it's on the other side of the building. Now, it's, it's, it's been advertised for forty-one foot district buffer. Does that buffer include the fence, that John's, you know, to look at? I know, because the fence is a structure, but.
I believe the buffer is from the property, from the building to the property line, correct?
The buffer is from the edge of pavement to property, is what's proposed.
So, you're showing forty point six proposed, the variance calls for forty-one, so you're gonna have to go forty-one. You have about five inches.
We've advertised at forty-one, huh?
Okay.
We can pull it back.
We can make work.
Is there a way to move that further, further closer to the building to increase the size of the buffer? The, when, when it was one of the other applications that it was, the strip mall or the medical building, we actually had had a buffer of fifty, fifty-nine feet for that south. The buffer between the property, the residents in this property.
That was for a strip mall?
That was for the strip mall? And, and while I understand fifty-nine is probably not feasible with having to park back there.
See, sorry.
Do you need that wide of a lane between the building and the parking spaces for, to back Carol?
So, that's what I was gonna say, I think that doing the turn, the turnaround there, I think they're gonna already kind of have to do a K-turns thing, but I think the closer you bring the end of that, and which means that the closer you bring your cars that are parking those spots closer, it's gonna make it a little more difficult to, to get cars in there now, manageable, probably. Also, the, the existing parking lot, I think, is what we went with the lines on, so it's already to where we've drawn the lines, we're just looking to pave the, what is now.
So, it's a stone parking lot now, in those dimensions.
It's stone and broken asphalt, so you intended to take that up or use any subways that we got. Top dress it, you'll pave it. We're actually pulling it back.
I'm sure the planning board will deal with this, but with you paving what's now a relatively impervious surface that's stone and not pavement, that water's not going to impact the neighbors to the south?
Uh, no, the DC actually, any kind of stone or gravel parking is considered impervious just because of the protection on it. So, we're actually overall reducing the impervious surface in the property.
Can you bring that one by me again?
Uh, DC considers stone gravel parking as impervious surface, so we are just, we're actually reducing the overall impervious, even though we are going from a gravel to an asphalt surface.
Seems like asphalt. Or is she or not?
Well, they have impervious, minor asphalt.
Or is it?
Goes through it. But that's something that's proposed.
I, that's, technically, I'd say it's a planning board issue, engineering and planning board, I, I understand your concerns, a little bit concerned.
Just so to.
Yeah, that's got what's related here in the apartment.
I mean, in taking Ms. Polo's concern, what we ran before, I mean, what we did before was, you know, help the neighbors to this.
Right.
I mean, in moving, eliminating one parking space along the side, those, those parking spaces are nine feet. As opposed to fifty feet as the previous variance, which was created, all the way. I don't think fences are permitted in the buffer area, that would be obvious. That's my recollection of that definition.
Except that I would insist on putting there.
Well, I, I understand, but if we do relocate that farther to, to the north, as far as the parking lot, that's gonna be, that's gonna be also, that's. And, and we would be protecting the neighbors to the H just as much as we did back in, maybe two thousand eighteen from the original application for the retail mall, for the strip mall. That's, that's my opinion.
Josh, your opinion on the fence, that it's a structure of the buffer, so I'm, I'm assuming that it's not allowed.
So, yeah, the definition of the buffer area is a strip of land where no building or structure may be located and which is covered with grass, vegetation, trees, and pavements or berms for other landscaping elements.
Would you be, yeah, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought, but I wanted confirmation. Would you be willing to, would you folks be willing to move the fence back to forty-one and just adjust the parking lot? Oh, you're gonna have to come back for another variance because it's advertised as forty-one feet for this buffer.
So, you're saying you want the fence?
You want the fence at forty-one feet?
I think, you could correct me if I'm wrong, now, I think what Mr. Hauser was suggesting is move the fence back to forty-one and push the parking lot back. It looks like the fence is what, here, nine feet off the.
That's what I'm saying, I mean.
He's crazy.
If, if it was located at least, well, eliminating the width of that one parking meter, if everything could be moved nine feet farther to the, to the north. This way it would provide some snow storage, just for your, not knocking over your fence with the snow plow, trying to remove the snow off your parking lot, it'll provide you a little more room. We're told it's the parking lot, not the fence.
So, move the parking lot, but leave the fence where it is?
No. Move everything.
In other words, then push the parking lot back.
That's right. Nine feet.
Yeah, so, I see, you're, you're saying because of how we've asked for forty-one foot variance, that a fence will now pose on that as well?
Well, the fence is located in the, in the buffer area.
So, you're saying the fence has to go here on the forty-one foot line, basically?
So, we could put a fence on the property, right?
Right. The fence is not permitted in the buffer area.
Yeah, I, I see, because it's residential and commercial, there's supposed to be a buffer area between the two, and it's, you know, fence, there's a structure that's within the buffer, so.
And where are fences permitted?
Well, they're not, it, it, because they're a structure, they're not permitted in the buffer, but the, I want having the fence, I like the location of the fence, if that makes sense. Would it be bad to have the applicant come in for variance for the, having the fence within the buffer? Because it does actually give, it, it just seems to lessen the impact on the neighbors to the south, and it and being tucked off of the edge of the park, the parking lot gives it room for storage.
I agree, but there should be your fence there. But I don't see why, I mean, it won't point in time.
Or have the fence be at forty-one feet and then still have your green space a little bit.
I think that in two thousand eighteen, the board requested a fifty foot separation.
We did have it, yeah.
And I don't see why today is any different than that, as far as trying to protect the neighbors to the south. I mean, I know that the use is being proposed for this location is, is not all intensive, but that's not gonna be the only commercial use at that site. All I'm trying to do is protect the neighbors to the south.
So, I think, I'm gonna just throw something out, so I think that we're hesitant to, to make that type of a change to the pavement because we don't know how it's gonna impact the vehicular condition.
I think I could throw up.
Right, I think that's a. So, you need, you're requesting us to move the parking lot ninety feet closer to the building.
That's correct.
And eliminating essentially.
Lose, lose this spot, whoever they ninety feet.
Right.
Yeah, we just gotta help it.
No, I mean, you don't need the fifty feet, but forty-nine feet is better than what's being proposed right now.
I understand. So, so, just so I'm clear too, so you're not moving the fence either, so are you, we're still asking for forty-one feet to the fence? Right?
Well, then we have to come back for a variance if that was the case.
My, I think, I think.
What if we, what if we just go with the buffer of, where is it? Was there number forty, we have it forty-one, what does that advertise at? We have the buffer at forty-one, and that would be either, if we leave the fence where it is, we have to come back. If we wanna make it to the fence, then we just shift it, correct?
Are you okay with moving the fence, Peter?
I, I can deal with it, yes. I'm just trying to understand exactly what's up, you know, with that.
So, essentially, if we lose this nine feet, take that one parking spot out, we shift everything up nine feet, including the fence, so I keep the distance from the edge of pavement to the fence, so I still have that snow storage, then that fence will move up fur- further enough to within the variance that we are currently requesting. Right?
That's your answer.
So, we won't have to come back.
So, the edge of pavement would be at forty-nine feet from the rear lot line?
That's correct.
But the buffer would be at forty-one feet and the fence would be at that point.
At forty-one.
Then you don't need to come back.
That would be right.
Because of the verbiage of what we've asked.
That's correct. In a way, it was advertised.
I understand.
Okay?
Well, and then that helps the other situation, because the dumpster is my other concern. Having a dumpster a hundred feet from the house is.
I understand, I understand, I've smelled my dumpster, but I do know.
Well, and it's just, yeah, it's a gap on the ways and.
True, very true, yeah.
I would say that too, but.
So. You folks want to modify the application to make it forty-one feet to the fence, forty-nine feet to the pavement?
And not a comeback, right?
That's right, is what I would like to hear.
I understand that.
That's correct.
Say it again, 41 feet to the fence and...
Okay, still, we've hammered that one up. The area of the old lot, 15,916, similar.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, pursuant to section 617, the environmental code of the motion for type 2C.
Seven.
In favor?
Aye.
Would somebody like to tackle standards? We're out.
I've given this one to Dan.
Howard's, Howard's. Let's see, the applicant can have derived economic use and benefit of the property, I believe the statement, I'm not sure if he indicated that, Ms. Bowles, the assertions of where attorney advises to approve the reservation.
No, we already tested, we already tested use warrants.
Oh, we're just doing, just doing the area here, I am sorry.
See, it's a lot easier.
Much easier. The request is not out of character to the neighborhood, it is not for other commercial uses in the area. This parcel was reviewed at previous applications and the area variances that are being requested are very similar to those other very, very, the applications that were granted, the benefit cannot be achieved in any other method, the applicant has proved that, the request is not substantial, have the variances being requested presently exist. There's no adverse or physical or environmental impacts on the site and the neighborhood, the applicant has proved that, plus sees enhancing the buffer to the south of his proposal, I'm just willing to answer that buffer. The applicant's also agreed to increase the area that's being requested for the buffer and it's larger than their application, the difficulty is not self-created, all variances are self-created, in my opinion, just these are the pieces. Let's see, I'm seeing...
I'm very mild on the...
Did you mention that the area variance for the lot, the lot is, hasn't changed in size?
Previously, previously 0.38 for that and it's returning to 0.38 for that.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the area variances located in 1173, 1175, which are by applicant Limelight Automotive, let's see, attorney, request the area variances to allow a 49 foot rear buffer where 100 feet is required, has amended, 14 foot...
No.
No, 41 foot, we should probably...
49 foot buffer to the parking lot and 41 foot to the fence.
Okay, so the district buffer would be 41 feet, but the edge of parking lot would be 45?
49, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, 14 foot east side setback to the existing house in an area variance to allow a 15,916 square foot lot, R-1B-2, where 45 square feet is required by code associated with construction of a 2300 square foot addition to the existing commercial balloon located at a 1.28 acre parcel, having SBL number 80.13-2-3.1 located in MC intensive, medium intensive commercial district under section 225-17 of the photo panel box.
Seven. Mr. Howser?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowler?
Aye.
Mr. Staffenday?
Aye.
Okay, the regulations, you have your variance and with some modifications that we did.
Thank you very much.
We need a, just one, that's one.
Now the, now the planning board will...
Thank you, thank you.
Good night. That concludes this evening's meeting of the CBA. Can I proceed a couple weeks?
Thanks, David.
Thank you, John. Thank you all.